I can call a starter. Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin? Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
All right, thank you, and welcome, everyone, to the City of Urbana Committee of the Whole Meeting. The first thing on our agenda would be the approval of the previous minutes from June 20th, 2023. Entertain a motion?
Move to approve the minutes of June 20th, 2023.
Thank you, Sharice.
Second.
Thank you, Chris, seconded by Chris Evans. Any questions or concerns of substance with the minutes? Seeing nothing, all those in favor of approving them say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That passes unanimously. Are there any additions we need to make to the agenda? Going once, going twice, okay. We'll move ahead with the agenda as presented. First, the next thing up is mayoral proclamation for Library Card Sign Up Month.
I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas, a library card is the most essential school supply of all. And whereas, libraries play a crucial role in the education and development of children. And whereas, libraries provide a learning environment that fosters joyful exploration, encouraging students to research subjects that they're genuinely curious about. And whereas, signing up for a library card is the first step on the path toward academic achievement and lifelong learning. And whereas, a library card gives students the tools that foster success in the classroom and beyond. And whereas, a library card empowers all people to pursue their dreams and explore new passions and interests and find their voice. And whereas, library staff create welcoming and inclusive spaces for people of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another. And whereas, libraries are constantly transforming to deliver new services that connect closely with community needs, even during a pandemic and beyond. Now, therefore, I, Diane Wolfe Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of September, 2023, as Library Card Sign Up Month in the City of Urbana, Illinois, at our free and wonderful Urbana Library.
Thank you, Diane.
And thank you, Celeste Choate, our Executive Director, for bringing us the new, beautiful library card that we have available. I'm glad to hear that you don't have to get a new library card to get that, you can turn in your old library card and get that if you want one of those beautiful pictures.
And you get a free bag and a sticker saying you got your library card.
Yeah, free bag and a free sticker as well. Thank you, Celeste. Okay, next, now we have time for public input. If you would like to address the Committee of the Whole, please come to the microphone and state your name. All right, anybody, okay. We'll move on to staff reports. No staff reports, all right. We'll move on to new business. First item of new business will be Resolution Number 2023-09-079R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency, IACA, grant for public arts program operating support.
Hello, everyone. Oh.
Got to get it closer.
Bring this closer. Hello, everyone. Good to see you all. I am very excited to be here. I don't really get to be here often, but I am glad to be sharing with you all that we received an award grant from Illinois Arts Council Agency for the general operating support grant for $9,600. And I'm also presenting the resolution to accept that grant.
All right.
If there's any questions on that.
Are there any questions? Yes, Sharice?
I just want to say congratulations, number one. I know the Arts Department, Cultural Arts Department, does a lot to try to beautify the City of Urbana, as well as support artists in the community, so I really appreciate that. I guess what I kind of want to know is, how is this going to be, like, broken up into several different, you know, to support several different artists in the community? Or how are you planning on using it this long?
So, this grant, basically, it's funds that goes into our program with unrestricted program support, so it will go into the pot that takes care of our general operating and all of the things that we do in the arts and culture program, which maybe sounds a little vague.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Ashandra?
It says something about matching funds required, so to accept, or I guess to even apply for this award, you had to be able to match the funds given? Is that correct?
Yes, if there are expenses that are over $50,000, the grant needs to be matched at 100% from our organization, which we have done. And if it was less, it would be a different percentage.
Thank you. Any other questions? Could I have a motion? Yes, Sharice?
I'd like to move for Resolution Number 2023-09-079R, resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency, IACA, grant for public arts program operating system. Be moved to, on a consent agenda, to City Council for approval.
I'll second.
Chandra, was that your second? All right, thank you for the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? That passes unanimously, thank you. Resolution Number, next up is Resolution Number 2023-09-080R, a resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from or paid with proceeds of an obligation to be issued by the City of Urbana.
So, as you know, the capital improvement plan that you recently approved at the end of June anticipates that we will issue $12 million in debt for capital improvements, primarily for facility projects, including the fire station projects. So, because of IRS regulations, we need to declare our intent to issue debt for those projects before we start spending money, and I expect that pretty soon we'll be, you know, into design. So, I wanted to get this out here early, so that we don't have any issue. There's no, this doesn't obligate you to issue debt later, all it does is make it possible for you to issue tax-exempt debt for those expenditures in the future, and that would likely happen by the end of calendar year 2023.
All right, any questions? Yes, Chris?
Yeah, thank you for that shortest presentation ever. So, just walk me through this a little bit, Elizabeth. So, to my understanding, the City of Urbana is taking out a roughly estimated $10 million loan from a bank, correct?
Yeah, yes, that's effectively what it is.
Yeah. And then, with that $10 million, the city is going to pay various construction companies to build two new fire stations, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, the city is going to pay back that $10 million, along with $2 million extra dollars for interest, over the next 10 years, is that right?
No, not exactly.
Okay.
So, what we're saying here is that we may be beginning to spend money now, for which we will later want to issue debt, right? So, some of the money probably will be spent before we issue the debt, some of it probably after. We're just stating our intent here, because for some reason, which I'm not sure I completely understand, that's important to the IRS, to guarantee that the bonds will be tax exempt. So, but yes, I mean, there is an interest cost when you issue debt. So, if we borrow $10 million, when we pay it back in the future, we will pay back more than $10 million. We won't know exactly what that number is until we get to the point where we're ready to issue the debt. So, because we're a small issuer, right? We would never issue more than $10 million in any calendar year. We will do a private placement process, so we will essentially let all of the local banks and probably some others that are in this market for private placement debt in Illinois know that we intend to issue debt. There'll be a very quick process where they give us their best option for the city, and we'll review those options, and then we'll ask council to approve the issuance of debt for the option that works, that's to the city's advantage, that's best for the city. But I can't tell you what the final cost is going to be until we go through that process.
I know we're talking rough estimates here, I understand that. But we haven't been given any estimate, though, on the demolition of the two old fire stations. Should we be including the cost of the demolition, too?
I'll start, and then maybe Tim wants something. That actually hasn't been factored in yet, because we haven't decided how we're going to dispose of the existing fire stations. I mean, there has been some commentary at council meetings about possibly wanting to put them out for bid in the current condition. I don't know that that's something that we would recommend, but we will be using them through the construction process. So, as far as I know, it's not factored into the scope of the work to be done, yet.
I'll just add on to that, we do have budgetary estimates for what that's going to cost us, within that figure if we had to. It's a nominal cost in comparison to everything else, if we need to do that.
So, demolition is cheaper than construction, right? I know it's faster.
Substantially.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Because in your September 26, 2022 presentation, you did, in the PowerPoint slides, you did say you were knocking those down. I mean, that's what it did say, so. I'm assuming you've planned somewhat for it.
Yeah, if that's the route that we choose to go, we would pay to have those demolished as part of the rest of the work. Just to talk, just for scale, you're talking probably less than $100,000, or in that ballpark, versus $10 million to construct new, so.
Right, 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 okay. All right, that is different, okay. So, last year, we were given more specific estimated costs, $10,172,052. And then, there was interest that was added to that that came to $12,329,094. And then, so, with the 46% inflation rate for the construction costs that was given at the May 22 and June 20 City Council meetings, the actual construction costs for the two new fire stations might be $15,251,195. And with interest at $2,032,909 per 1 million, that would add $3,493,635, making the fire stations project possibly $18,744,830 for just construction. So, my question is, shouldn't we at least be asking for $19 million in a loan?
So, maybe, so.
You want to go?
Sorry. So, I don't think so.
You don't think what?
I don't think we should be asking for $19 million, right? So, we would never issue more than $10 million in debt in any one calendar year regardless, because of our small issuer status. I think we've received some pretty favorable bids recently on some projects. So, much of what you're talking about is just unknown, right? Like, until we actually bid, we don't know the construction cost. Until we get ready to issue the bonds, we don't know what the interest rates is that we're going to pay. So, there's a lot here that's unknown, and there are options. If the cost is higher than expected, there are options other than just issuing more debt. One of the options could be to reprioritize other projects in the CIP. So, it's not just a really simple, like, we're going to pay X for the fire stations, and we're going to issue debt for all of that.
And to follow up on that, the $10 million is a more realistic number. That's going to be refined through this design process, we're going to have checkpoints. So, the way we're doing this is a construction manager approach, where we have a construction manager engaged through the design. So, when we get schematic design done in the next month or so, they're going to provide a real estimate of what they think it would cost today to build what we're asking, and then we're going to iteratively work through that to the design, so that if we think we're getting substantially above or below this estimated figure that we provided here, you're going to be well informed of that ahead of time. You know, by the time we get to bid, we should actually have pretty reasonably accurate numbers at that point. But the 40% is not necessarily tacked on top of that $10 million estimate that we have here.
Okay. And I was looking at it today, Tim, and it looks like we're at, like, $612 per square foot. Is that, did that sound familiar?
That's in the right ballpark, between design and construction inclusive.
Okay, thanks.
All right, are there other questions? I also, I'll have a quick question. An amount that we need may be adjusted based on successful grant applications as well? Is that correct?
Sure, sure, it could.
So, things may change between now and then, so we don't absolutely have to go to the bond debt well to take care of what the actual end costs are?
Correct. A lot of things could change between now and that point in time. So, I mean, in the big picture, this isn't just about the fire stations, but it's about the whole capital improvement fund, and all the projects that are part of that fund, and just making sure that that gap is closed, so that we can pay for those projects.
All right, thank you. Last call for questions. Yes, Sharice?
A question I have, will we be getting any of the infrastructure money from the federal government? And if so, does, could this project possibly fall into that category where we could use those funds?
Tim, do you want to?
I mean, it's not to say no, but realistically, timeline-wise, it's unlikely that we're going to get money for the fire stations from that money. A lot of that's being prioritized for different types of infrastructure. We don't have any applications waiting in the wings in regards to that federal money currently.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Chandra?
It says, two fire stations and other projects. Does that mean, like, the renovations to this building that was talked about, or what other projects does that include?
Actually, this is general enough that it could be any other project in that fund, but specifically, I was thinking of the plan to do improvements to the Public Works Facility, which is kind of the next phase of facility projects.
All right, Chris, did you have another question?
A quick follow-up. Tim, were you ever able to catch up on the, the state apparently has some new laws regarding funding for fire stations? Remember, I sent you that, have you been able to follow up on that at all?
I've checked in on some of that stuff. Some of that funding is, you know, it's not necessarily, we apply for it, we get it, some of it's discretionary funding, so it's subject to having something in the queue in the right time. As with any grants, you know, it's all a time sensitivity thing. Is the hammer going to drop in the right timeframe for us to take advantage of it or not? And are we going to be far enough along? Because that's a big push for any grant funding, as soon as they give you the money, they want you to spend it immediately, and show you're able to produce, so. But I don't have information directly related to that, that we have additional new monies from that, so.
All right, can I have a motion? Sharice?
Well, I'd like to move for Resolution Number 2023-09-080R, a resolution expressing official intent regarding certain capital expenditures to be reimbursed from or paid with proceeds of an obligation to be issued by the City of Urbana, Illinois, HRF. I'd like to actually move this resolution. Is it possible for me to put it on consent agenda? Or is it because of monies?
Is it a budget issue? Is it going to be a budget issue?
It's not a budget amendment, I think it could be placed on the consent agenda.
Okay, placed on the consent agenda for approval for, to City Council.
Sharice, if I could suggest that, since we have a couple of people that aren't here tonight, and this, the importer of this, could we not put it on consent?
Sure.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Chea. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay?
Nay.
That motion passed. Next up, we have ordinance number 2023-09-032, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number one, omnibus.
Oh, good evening, everyone. All right, so this is the first budget amendment related to the fiscal year 24's budget. So, first, under general operating fund, there's a few rebudget items. So, any unspent funds set aside for a number of purchases and projects that were not completed in fiscal year 23 will be carried over to fiscal year 24's budget. So, these items are listed here in the memo, as you can see. But the one thing that I would like to point out, like, the equipment line items, which is a total of about $108,000, that is from multiple equipment lines from various departments. So, we automatically rebudget those items that are not in the VERF, since they are not, they don't go within the threshold, which is $5,000. So, anything that is less than $5,000 are budgeted in this line item. And then, another thing from Public Works, related to the storm damage cleanup costs, which, the severe storm that occurred on June 29 of this year, so a total of about $88,000, which covers the staff overtime cost and cleanup cost. And then, under community development, which is related to what was presented earlier, the Illinois Arts Council Grant, so we are just budgeting the $9,600 in this year's budget. So, we are budgeting the related revenue and expenditures in this year's budget. And then, under the Capital Replacement and Improvement Fund, related to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity Grant that was awarded to the city in fiscal year 23. So, a total grant amount of about $2 million was awarded to the city, and this was budgeted under Community Development Grants Fund. 1.5 million of that amount was allocated for capital improvement projects. And so, this budget amendment is just to, or this item is just to request to move that 1.5 million out of the city grants fund into the capital improvement, capital replacement and improvement fund, which, you know, where it can be accounted for with other city facility projects. And then, under Local Motor Fuel Tax Fund, so this is another rebudget item, so we are carrying over the unspent funds of about $28,000 related to the Windsor Road litigation cost to this year's budget, so to cover any outstanding invoices for legal services. And then, under VERF, there are two items. First, rebudget items, so again, a number of scheduled replacement in fiscal year 23 that were not completed will be carried over to this year's budget. So, these items are listed in detail on the exhibit. And then, the second item under VERF, so this is related to Public Works, so they would like to trade in one of its, one of its backhoes, which is scheduled in the VERF, for its replacement in 2028. So, they are, they would like to trade in for a mini excavator with a trailer. So, the mini excavator, the quoted price is about $120,000, and the trailer is about $26,000, which totals up to $146. So, the trade-in value for that existing backhoe is about $70,000, so there's already $80,000 that's been contributed to the future replacement in 2028. So, there is no additional one-time transfer request for this item, so because of the $70,000 trade-in value offer plus the contributed amount. So, we're just simply requesting to put this into fiscal year 2024's budget. The increase in recurring cost is about $1,000, so which is to be replaced every 12 years, and this will be effective in fiscal year 25, if we do proceed with this. And then, under Landscape Recycling Center Fund, a total of about $9,000 will be rebudgeted, which will be carried over to fiscal year 2024's budget for scheduled replacement equipment. And then, the city grants fund, this is related to what I just mentioned earlier regarding the 1.5 million being transferred to the Capital Replacement and Improvement Fund. And then, under the ARPA Fund, we are requesting to secure funding of about $420,000 to cover costs associated with the partial special census. So, this will be funded using the ARPA standard allowance. And then, lastly, under the General Reserve Fund, we are requesting to add $800,000 to cover any expenses related to the recent appellate decision related to the Carl case. The final amount hasn't been determined, but we believe that this amount is sufficient to cover any expenses. And I believe that is all. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Chris?
Ally, thanks for the presentation, and you, Elizabeth, or Diane, might want to chime in. The $400,000 to do the census, are we expected to reap some kind of harvest on that? Are we going to get it back to $42,000 and get our money back, so to speak?
The goal is to recapture as much of the population that was not counted during the pandemic, so yes, we, that is the goal. If you remember, we set aside close to $600,000 from the standard allowance to potentially cover the cost of a special census. So, the estimate we got from the federal government for their side of the cost of conducting the census is about $391,000, and then there will be local expenses related to setting up an office and equipping that. So, this 419 should be enough to cover that.
How many volunteers can we, well, they wouldn't be volunteers, are we paying people to do the census?
The federal government will pay enumerators in the census. We don't have the breakdown of how many people are involved, but that will become, that information will become available as we get into it.
Thank you.
But the idea is to conduct this special census next spring.
Thank you. If you could add, Diane, do we have an idea of if we recover the population that was lost, just at a minimum, not any extra, do we know how much that will mean in dollars for the city annually?
I think our estimates were $600,000 to $700,000 a year.
A year?
Yeah.
So, it's less than a year return on investment if we do this?
It's definitely worth our efforts.
Other questions? Yes, Chandra?
The donation items? The donation items, like the website and the Arbor donation, do we know who that's from, or is that just like?
This is, I believe, back in fiscal year 2022's budget.
They asked to remain anonymous for those.
Yeah.
Which is it?
Yeah.
All right, further questions? There aren't any other questions? Could I have a motion, please?
I'll move ordinance number 2023-09-032, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number one omnibus, to City Council on regular agenda.
A second.
For approval, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Sharice, seconds? All right, any further discussion? Any no further discussion? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, that concludes our new business for this evening. We can now move on to council input and communications. Any council members wish to address the Committee of the Whole? Don't see any hands going up. With that, our business is completed and we are adjourned. Thank you.